Good afternoon, residents of Everett, Washington and interested parties. I'd like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting of June 25th, 2025. For information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit everettwa.gov/citycouncil. For the record, President Schwab will be participating in today's meeting remotely, and I'll be facilitating on his behalf. We also have Councilmember Bader attending remotely. And let's see, I guess that's it. Clerk, will you please take the role?
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
President Schwab?
Here.
Councilmember Fossey?
Here.
Councilmember Bader?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Attending later, I believe.
Councilmember Vogely?
Excused.
Councilmember Tuwi?
Excused.
Vice President Sarlingo?
Here I am. I'd like to ask, ah, let's see, actually, Councilmember Ryan has not arrived yet, so I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Fossey, will you please read our land acknowledgement?
Gladly. The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Hobes people and their successors, the Talalib tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion for approval of the minutes of June 18th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Clerk, please take the role.
President Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Vice President Sarlingo?
Yes, and the record should show that Councilmember Ryan has arrived and is participating. Well, first with comments from our mayor, Ms. Franklin.
No comments today, thank you.
Thank you. And now it's time for public comments, which include written comment acknowledgement. Under our rules, written comments are considered in the same manner as oral comments. The person submitting the comment must provide their name and city of residence. Written comments require this to be made a part of our official council record. Angie, do we have written or public comments this afternoon?
We have not received any written comments, and we do have one individual here in chambers for public comment. If Mason could please come to the podium? And please press the button on the base of the mic. State your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Great, thanks. Mason Rutledge, Everett, Washington. Good afternoon, Mayor Franklin and members of the Everett City Council. At the close of last week's meeting, Mayor Franklin rightly took a moment to recognize the tireless effort of city staff in finalizing Everett 2044. Today, I'd like to take a few minutes, well, actually, no more than three, to shine that same spotlight on you all, the council members who helped bring this comprehensive plan to life. As someone who has watched your work unfold, I want to say you all did an incredible job. You listened, truly listened. You adapted with humility and intention. You created space for hard and necessary conversations, and you reached consensus with thoughtfulness and courage. I hope that after last week's meeting, you all had a moment to celebrate. I know that if you met at a bar, David would have to be there. There'd be minutes, it would be awkward. So I hope you at least had a well-earned high five or good old-fashioned attikid. You deserve it. Healthy teams celebrate. The proof of your work was right there in the chamber last week, or rather, in its silence. Many expected a packed house for that final vote, but by my count, there were just two residents in the chamber. Now, that wasn't due to a lack of interest, you know that. On the contrary, your chamber had been full in the weeks leading up to that meeting. It was empty because you had done the work. You responded, recalibrated, recognized. You responded to concerns, you recalibrated down to individual street corners. It was kind of amazing. And recognized so that people felt heard. But what's most meaningful is you didn't just hear the loudest voices in the room in our city. You considered those who couldn't be there. People working double shifts, those caring for others, neighbors navigating limited mobility or the housing insecure. Your choices showed that their needs mattered, too. You created a plan not just for outspoken Everett, but for all Everett. You built a roadmap, not just for the Everett we know today, but for the one we imagine, a place where everyone has a shot at an accessible home, a safe environment, and a life that thrives. Last week might have felt like the finish line, but I hate to tell you this, that was the starting line for Everett 2044. The path ahead, it won't be quiet. I'm hearing from neighbors, no one told me, you're in someone's pocket, there are bulldozers in my alley. Pushback is part of the process. But if the last few months proved anything, it's this. You've got the grit and grace to get after it. Leadership often means absorbing criticism and rarely hearing thanks. So let this be the moment we say it loud. On behalf of a grateful community, thank you and congratulations on a job exceptionally well done.
Thank you, and that concludes our public comments.
Thank you. And now for information from administration. Good afternoon, Jennifer.
No update from administration today.
And the same for our city attorney, David Hall.
No report, no executive session.
All right, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is a guest presentation. I'd like to welcome Shana Peszek of the Machinist Institute, who has a presentation for us on childcare access.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to come share the work that we are doing. We're very excited about this. I'm going to very easily share with no technical difficulties, right? We can all... Okay. All right, so I'm here to talk about Little Wings Early Learning Academy and the impact of the childcare capacity for those that work shifts and how that impacts the economy, local economy, community, and the employers that really need this workforce developed. So I'm Shana Peszek. I am the executive director of the Machinist Institute. We were created by the International Association of Machinists 751, right here with the brand-new Union Hall and Training Center. So we have a large training center footprint in the area now. Before that, I had supported the building trades on especially access for women and communities that were historically excluded into these careers, where I focus a lot on the challenge for childcare, which most people tend to put money towards a solution because we know how expensive it is, and nobody can argue that. But when you dig into the actual availability of childcare slots for people that are working in the trades, in advanced manufacturing and aerospace, in healthcare, there are no options. There's nothing that's open during those shifts. So no matter how much money we can support and subsidize for individuals, if they can't find anything open, then it's still not a solution to their barrier. So luckily, John Holden, president of IM751, shared this vision with me, especially since he talked to members who had said that once they had a child, they were not going to come back to work because they couldn't find childcare when they needed it. So with that, we embarked on looking for solutions. Here's just some more data. I'm not going to read through this, but the numbers are, you know, tell the story. It is, you know, a large challenge, not just for single parents, but for families, and still more particularly for women. So we started getting some grant funding and looking into how we could make a difference in this space. At that point, still, it hadn't landed on actually opening a childcare center, but that's where we landed. We have also provided some grant funding to have family home centers licensed with technical assistance from the Imagine Institute. So we recognize there's not one solution for everybody. Parents have choices. But the largest project we're doing is to open a childcare center that will be open non-standard hours. It will be open to the community, not just our members and our students and just manufacturing. It will be open to anyone who needs that. And these are kind of our vision and goals for why we're embarking on this project and what we want to see come out of it. Part of the research I had done in my last role was not just discussing this on the parent need, but also the childcare workforce need. So we've taken that lens as we've gone down this pathway to make sure we're not causing harm or not taking into consideration the needs of the childcare workforce itself as we try to make a difference in this capacity. So here's our key objectives, you know, really opening up opportunities for people. We know that the younger individuals entering the workforce get the worst shifts. So those are also most likely to have children or want to have children in the near future. So at that pinch point, it's very hard for employers to start growing their own employees, doing registered apprenticeship, and hiring when the workers can't find solutions like this. We have a core belief system in supporting underserved and underrepresented communities, and this is another strategy for us to be able to open those pathways. And because registered apprenticeship is my, that's my passion, that's what I love and what I've really put a lot of my career into, it's important to me that our childcare workforce has the same opportunity to meet their education and training needs. So we will be a training agent employer for those teachers and have apprenticeship as a solution for them. These are kind of the early childhood development key points. One of the pieces of this childcare center will be a nature care only, which I have learned more about childcare than I ever imagined. And the nature care seems to be a very popular choice for parents who need a shorter timeframe for their children. Sometimes parents that are dropping off and picking up, and there's some crossover that needs to happen, or those who just want their children to have an opportunity to be learning, having that STEM experience in a nature environment. So that will be another program under Little Wings Early Learning Academy. It's, you know, pretty obvious that the impact of this on the workforce and the employers in the region as far as getting the workers that they need. We do focus on apprenticeship and aerospace and manufacturing, and so this is particularly important for our students as well and getting that flexibility to find people to work in these different shifts. These are family-sustaining careers. Once we can get people into these opportunities, it can change their trajectory and their family's trajectory, get them retirement with dignity, and give them the ability to reinvest into the community. So the, you know, larger impacts of finding solutions for this are much bigger. Here's the size of the childcare center when it's completed. It will be able to serve nearly 500 students, children, across those different shifts. So it'll be licensed for 168, but the nature of that. We are getting licensed for 24/7. That includes overnight care. We will be phasing this in and open during those more, you know, like overnight once we have demand for it. So the childcare workforce, as I said, we are invested and committed to providing apprenticeship pathways for our teachers so that they will have that same hands-on learning and ability to get those credentials and certificates that they need. When you consider the pay that they get, and then on top of that requiring education, that is additional costs, that's what we're trying to reduce for them as much as we can. We also plan for them to have the ability to be represented above market wages and benefits. So between the Union and Machinist Institute, that's really the whole vision for this project. And we are having a groundbreaking on July 2nd. So it's an existing building. The renovations will start right after that groundbreaking. We're really excited to finally have gotten to this point. It has been an incredible journey. I've been asked more questions about tiny toilets and things like that than I ever imagined. But we're hoping that this becomes a model that other employers, other unions can help replicate. We've used Imagine Institute, which is a nonprofit, as a consultant on this, and they've been going through and kind of documenting our story and our processes and what the considerations. So anybody else who wants to take the, you know, dive into a project like this can use that as lessons learned and best practices along the way. So we're here to support this beyond this first childcare center. We have gotten public funds and some legislative funds and some federal funds. The reason that we have asked for so much public and private funding, and we're still doing fundraising, is because the cost of overhead for this childcare center, the lower we can reduce that, the higher the wages. It's a nonprofit, and we really want to put as much of the money into the wages and benefits for the teachers as we can and still stay in the black. Any questions?
Any questions from Mr. Peszek?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say thank you. This has been such a need for so long, and we're very excited to have shift work childcare in the city of Everett to support our workforce. So very exciting. Thank you.
Councilmember Fossey?
I am so excited for this project. It's so well-thought-out on tackling not only just the overall, you know, deficit of good quality early learning and childcare, but it's also addressing so much more and giving back to the community and training the workforce and the shift work schedules, and so so much more there. I know a lot of work has gone into this and working with Imagine. When you say that you want it to be a model for others with all your best practices and tips, what form does that come in? Is that through the Imagine Institute? Or if somebody was interested in learning more about that, where would they find those resources?
We've put kind of a guidebook together already. We'll continue to add to it as we go through the construction. We have lots more to say on the actual permitting, building process that we're adding to that through this experience. But they can definitely reach out to me and Imagine. I don't think I'll ever step away from this work. And so that's both of us. We have stuff on our website. We are creating, the Little Wings website should go live very soon. So we will make sure that that information is available.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ryan?
Great, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I'd love to join for the groundbreaking. It sounds very exciting. Personal note, both my kiddos did outdoor preschool and loved it and thrived from it. So I was glad to hear about that addition. As, you know, as councilmembers and as the city's been hearing more and knowing more about how the Everett Community College's Early Learning Center is closing, I mean, there's clearly a need for more childcare slots in the community. But as far as best practices go, my unsolicited advice, if you haven't done it already, would be to reach out to the community college to get a good understanding of some of their lessons learned through their Early Learning Center and things that could maybe have or like unforeseen circumstances that they, you know, in hindsight, could have maybe taken care of if there are any. So just, I think, tapping into their lessons learned might be helpful to maybe avoid any obstacles in the future for you guys. So just wanted to toss that out there as unsolicited advice.
Thank you. I would also wish we could hire right now some of those teachers.
All right, and do we have any questions or comments from our council members online? Councilmember Fossey?
Given you've gone through this, you know, whole experience, you know, from the very beginning and probably learned a lot of the barriers and some of the hills that you had to climb, some things being easier than others, is there anything at the city level that you would suggest or that we could look into that could be done to make that process easier? Or has it been pretty smooth at that level as far as getting to where you need to be?
I would say permitting improvements. You know, childcare is a little outside of what your normal kind of business is. And so I would say that's been one of our biggest challenges, is being able to communicate that and be able to get through. We're still waiting for our final permit. We should get that this week. But it's been a very long and difficult process.
Yeah, I would encourage you to connect with Dan Teppleman, who's in the audience. And so we'd love some more specifics. We've made quite a number of investments in permitting, adding staff, adding an architect, adding online capacity to do it. So I would love to hear the specifics of where the barriers are so that we can continue to make further improvements. Thanks.
Thank you.
Ryan, well, thank you, Ms. Peszek. Good luck in your new venture. And did you say when you expect it to be opening?
February, I'm going to say March 2026. And then hopefully, we'll have the grand opening in February.
Great, great. Keep us up to date. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And next on our agenda is comments and briefings from our council member liaison and their liaison duties and other attendees. So let me start with President Schwab.
My only report is just to recognize the presentation, and it really shows when labor, the labor group and the management team and the community all come together and provide the needs of the workers in the community. So thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossey?
Thank you. I'm still grinning from that presentation. I'm very, very excited for that. So huge thank you to the Machinist Institute and everyone there. This weekend, we had Everett Pride, and that was a lot of fun and excitement and positivity. A little bit of rain, but that didn't hold anybody back. And that was one area where I know Councilmember Vogely and myself were able to designate some of our ARPA dollars to make sure we can have those types of activities available for the community. Upcoming, I found out that Shakespeare in the Park is happening again, and I believe it's the fifth annual celebration they're doing. That's Saturday, August 9th. So everybody mark your calendars for that at Wiggums Hollow Park. I love going to that each year, and I highly encourage the community to go to this free event. They'll have free hot dogs, and there'll be popcorn, and there's a raffle, and it's a lot of fun. So that's 6:00 PM on August 9th. Other than that, I think that that's all I have for today.
Thank you. Councilmember Bader?
Yeah, real quick, I went to the council neighborhood meeting. Their focus at the last meeting was obviously talking about National Night Out coming up on, I think, Tuesday, August 5th. So preparations various neighborhoods are making for that. And also, they're reviewing the council neighborhood bylaws, so kind of begin that process. Yeah, last thing I'd say is apologize for any background noise. I'm at the Association of Washington Cities meeting. So if I disappear when we get to the very last agenda items because the conference started up again, and I will go back to that work. So thanks, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mason, for your kind words. I appreciate you sharing that today. But I got to definitely give credit where credit's due and shout out to staff for bringing us an amazing work product to work off of, and that baseline really helped make us look good. So but all credit definitely goes to staff for the great work that they did to get the foundational framework together. I also attended Pride this, Pride Festival this last weekend and was really glad that as chair of the LTAC Committee, I was able to help with directing funds to put on events like Pride and other events throughout the summer that really breathe life into our downtown space. Last, I just wanted to share a friendly reminder that Sound Transit has a survey that is live right now, and I think responses are due by June 29th for people to provide input, feedback, and responses on non-motorized access to station locations for the Everett Link. They have an interactive map, which you will get lost in for at least an hour, like I did, I hope, where you can go through all of the proposed projects, intersection improvements, crosswalks, you know, sidewalk improvements, all of the things. And you can rank whether you want to see that project happen or not, and then also provide input on what improvements they could make to their suggested improvement. So please check out the Everett Link participation page and provide your input so that Sound Transit can have more investments in our Everett Link stations. Thank you.
Well, for my own part, I would like to second those comments about Everett 2044 and to also note that, yes, we do have, after all the work by the Planning Commission and Planning Department, administration, we do have work to do coming up to tune up the neighborhood businesses, expand that, and to look at a manufactured housing zoning overlay. So there's ongoing work. I think that's probably the way planning should be done, lots of work upfront, and then sustaining it. For myself, I just came back from the celebration of the 100th anniversary of our Fire Station 2 building, now the Everett Fire Department headquarters. If you're interested, you still have time. This community open house is happening until 2:00 PM today. The fire station was designed and built in an amazing five months, I learned today. And even though it's 100 years old, it's quite a bit younger than the fire department itself, which was started in 1892. Building's on the National Register of Historic Places, and the building is now the headquarters of the fire department. It's a really neat structure and worth stopping by and taking a look. Last night was the Pinehurst Beverly Park Ice Cream Social at Lyons Park, one of my very favorite parks. I want to recognize and express my thanks to the residents that organize these events and work tirelessly to make our neighborhoods better. Mayor Franklin stopped by to connect our public outreach on utilities and energy efficiency from a representative from Public Works. Chief DeRousse was there, along with a lot of the officers working to address the challenges that park has faced. And in cooperation with neighbors, they've made great progress in the past several years in making this park the best benefit it can be for our residents. One more thing I want to highlight, tomorrow evening's Building Bridges event, something you might consider attending. The Building Bridges Project was co-founded by Snohomish County Councilmembers Nate Naring and Jared Mead. It's a nonpartisan nonprofit dedicated to strengthening civic health through structured dialogue and leadership development. They begin with interested students in the school phase and extend that to the rest of us. This Summit 2.0 tomorrow night builds on the momentum of last year's inaugural event, demonstrating a continued commitment to respectful, solution-focused conversations. And that's tomorrow, June 26th, at WSU Everett, 9:15 North Broadway. It'll run from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. This year's theme is Conversations That Connect Us, highlighting the impact of civil discourse when grounded empathy, curiosity, and shared purpose. And I'd like to also recognize this event is presented by the Greater Everett Chamber of Commerce in partnership with the Building Bridges Project. So great stuff. I'd encourage you to attend. I plan to attend myself. And I think that's it for our comments. Let's move on to consent items. We have seven consent items on our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve these consent items?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
Second.
All right, with a motion and a second, Clerk, please take the role.
President Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Sarlingo?
Yes. And now moving on to our action items. The first one is to adopt a resolution establishing prohibited areas that are related to areas of drug trafficking. Do I have a motion?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
Councilmember Bader, seconds.
All right, and do we have a briefing on this item, then? Okay, if there are any questions or comments? Councilmember Ryan?
Yeah, so Lacey, if you don't mind sharing more about like the benefits of removing an area? The presentation last week was about, shared that there was going to be one area that would be removed from the map and a new one added. So what are some of the benefits of taking an area off the map? Or if there's a requirement to do so based on total area coverage and whatnot?
Certainly. It's no precise science as far as area of the city that...
Certainly. Um, it's no precise science um, as far as uh, area of the city that can be covered or should be covered. But we do like to be very judicious in um, making sure that the SOTA areas that we do adopt and that council does adopt. Um, not only track the data to the best that we can and the experience of officers and sergeants on the street. Um, but also because the obviously imposing a SOTA order on any individual defendant does affect their ability to move in and around the city. We want to make sure that they still have the capabilities of accessing transit, for example, uh, or accessing services. Um, and in addition to being judicious about the SOTA areas that we do adopt, uh, that helps us um, protect against any um, allegations that the city is uh, being too restrictive with people's ability to move in and about the city, their ability to travel. Um, but you're not the only line of defense when it comes to that. The SOTA order areas, uh, SOTA area orders uh, are also reviewed by a judge before they're imposed. And very frequently the judge will remove certain areas or reduce certain areas uh, specific to an individual defendant. But when we recommend a removal, it's really the data um, and the police experience isn't supporting keeping that area on as it relates to alleviating or eliminating drug trafficking in the area.
Okay. Thank you. Many other questions? All right, with a motion and a second and no other questions or discussion, clerk, please take the role.
President Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Serlingo?
Yes. Our uh, other action item is to authorize our mayor to sign the Third Amendment to the amended and restated Riverfront Property Disposition Agreement in the form substantially provided. Do I have a motion?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
Councilmember Bader, seconds.
All right. Um, and do we have any questions or discussion on this item? All right, with a motion and a second and no questions or no other questions or discussion, clerk, please take the role.
President Schwab?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Serlingo?
Yes. Last item on our agenda today is a briefing and a proposed action item. Uh, let's see, I'll do the first reading here and then we'll have our briefing. Uh, this is Council Bill two five zero six dash three eight, the first reading. Adopt an ordinance related to, relating to ambulance and emergency first aid services, adding a section to Chapter three point eight two of the Everett Municipal Code. The third and final reading of this measure is expected uh, July ninth uh, twenty twenty-five. And now briefing by our Chief DeMarco.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, uh, David DeMarco, Fire Department. Let me see if I can get the technology to sing here. You're gonna have to let me share my screen. Okay. I don't know why it's not full size up there.
Yeah.
How do you unpos it?
Let's try again. All right. Sorry about that. Uh, Fire Department and Legal have worked together to draft an ordinance that proposes to uh, penalize licensed care facilities for the use of emergency services to do routine lift assists when there's no medical emergency as part of the request. Um, this proposed ordinance is modeled after one that exists in the city of Tacoma that was enacted in twenty twenty-one. Um, a little bit about the licensed care facilities and, and we've shared with you uh, digitally, the list of facilities in the city. Um, there's about fifteen of them and uh, a licensed care facility always has a licensed staff present in the building. Um, typically uh, registered nurses or at least a licensed practical nurse, uh, all of whom have the, the licensure and training to do lift assists without the assistance of emergency medical technicians or paramedics. The facilities are required by law to be able to provide this service and the Department of Social and Health Services routinely, annually reminds these facilities that they're required to be able to do this without calling nine one one. Emergency medical services, as we all know, are, are really intended to be funded to provide emergency services for medical emergencies. And the community's expectation is that we're available to do that. Uh, I think that the community understands that if the closest unit is, is used in another emergency, that they're going to get the next closest unit. Uh, but they may not fully understand that occasionally we're called to do things that are not emergent. Um, and that the closest unit might be tied up doing a routine lift assist for a facility that's supposed to be able to do that on their own. Another thing the community might not understand is that if something more serious uh, comes in while the local unit is doing this, um, they can't just break away to the more serious thing because once you've committed to serving someone, um, also by law, we're required to go and examine them to make sure that there's not actually a medical emergency occurring. Uh, so that, so that once the unit is assigned, they're committed. Um, I'm sure that you'll ask approximately how often would we uh, expect this penalty to possibly be considered? And so we queried our twenty twenty-four data uh, for those specific facilities that you have a list of. And we were called there for uh, seventy lift assists, fifty-five of which did not result in a transport. And, and while we didn't look up the narratives and, and read the actual details of all fifty-five of those incidents, we think that a reasonable assumption is that we might be referred between forty and fifty incidents a year. So of the twenty-seven thousand five hundred incidents that we answered last year, uh, between forty and fifty would probably be considered for this penalty. Before we impose uh, any penalty, should you approve the, the ordinance, uh, we will go through a directed educational campaign in person with all, uh, each and every one of these facilities. We'll schedule time with their staff. Uh, we've done this previously for a program called Make the Right Call, trying to direct them to call nine one one when they should and, and not. Um, and so we will make a, an affirmative handshake with each and every one of these facilities and their training staff to make sure that they understand well in advance of, of the imposition of any penalty, uh, what the consequences will be. Uh, we originally and, and possibly in one of the drafts that I sent you proposed an eight-week um, grace period, but, but in sitting down with staff, we've, we've kind of agreed that we'd like to take the rest of twenty twenty-five to be able to do that work and, and really be comprehensive about connecting with each one of these facilities and helping them understand the new ordinance. And so we expect that we would uh, make this begin to enforce the penalty in the new year, uh, twenty twenty-six. Um, the penalty as proposed is not intended to be a revenue stream. This is not going to carry any um, uh, positive or negative financial consequences for Fund one five-three, which is the EMS fund. Um, it is not intended to punish these facilities for calling nine one one. We'll still, i- in the event that they choose to use us for this service, we will educate them again on the scene. We'll be polite and professional. Uh, we'll explain to them that this is not our responsibility, um, that, that they have an obligation to provide this service to their residents themselves. Uh, but we will impose a penalty to disincentivize their use of our service for this purpose in the future. Um, the calculation of the penalty and, and you have a, a copy of the draft administrative policy is formulaic. Uh, it is written in the ordinance that the, the penalty will be based on the average cost of delivering this service in the community. Um, and so we've done some rough calculations. I still need to sit down with the mayor's office and go through them. Um, one of the questions that has not yet been answered is, is are we using the there's some elements of personnel costs that we have to decide whether they should be included or not. And so I would say that the draft that you receive, which says that the penalty will be in the vicinity of five hundred and sixty dollars, that the range of penalties is probably somewhere between eight hundred and five hundred and fifty dollars. Um, as we sit down, but I need the input from the mayor's office before we finalize that, that formula. Um, because personnel is a, is a part of that expense, it'll be recalculated annually after the June to June C P I figures come in. Uh, and then we'll republish just as we do with all of other administrative fees, the new fee uh, in the new year. Um, in the event that the facility disagrees, uh, that this penalty should apply to them, there is an appeal process included in the ordinance and then fleshed out in the administrative policy. Uh, the fire chief will be the deciding authority in that uh, administrative appeal. Um, and uh, you know, myself or whoever my uh, successor might be, um, we're not in the business of trying to penalize uh, facilities in the, in the community. We want them to be successful in their own right, but we also need to, to work to ensure that emergency services remain available for emergencies. And so that is uh, sort of the underlying theme of the entire ordinance. And that is the end of my presentation. Um, if you have any questions, now's the time.
Question, Chair and Chamber, uh, councilmember Ryan?
Thank you. Uh, so for those fifty-five calls, I know you weren't uh, there, maybe we were for a few of them. Um, I guess anecdotally, what would have happened to that person if um, if your crew didn't show up?
Well, so I, I, I've been doing this a long time and, and this is not new to the organization. Um, in my experience, there's been a range of experiences inside some of these facilities over the years. Occasionally we will encounter someone in the middle of the night who is the, the lone um, nurse assigned to a floor in one of these facilities. And the person that has uh, slipped down in the bed or slipped to the floor, they've not hurt themselves. Uh, but they just need assistance getting back to a chair or a bed. Um, and that the person in the facility is either uh, not willing or unable to make the lift. Uh, we will always go and do that lift. Um, occasionally we encounter someone where we explain to them that, and, and we've provided this uh, D S H S later, letter to these facilities many times over the years, explaining to them, you know, you're required to be able to do this yourself. Occasionally, uh, facilities reply with, it's our policy to call you for anyone uh, that we're not able to lift because we don't want to, we don't want to injure our employees. And, and all they're really doing is, is passing that potential employee injury from their business to ours. And um, and so after many years of, of trying to convince facilities to be able to do this work on their own as they're required to do, um, this is kind of the result. But, but to answer your question, um, in no case will somebody be left on the floor. All right. So if, if they need us to come and do the lift, we will always come and do the lift. Uh, but, but if they call us often enough to do this, it's going to become expensive enough that they're going to decide to hire more staff.
Yeah.
And that's the direction we would want them to head.
It should incentivize them to staff their facility accordingly so that they have the resources available to help people at all times as they're required to do.
Ryan?
One more follow-up. Uh, thank you. Um, as a recommendation, policy recommendation, I do think there should be um, a minimum uh, for what the uh, fee would be just for predictability and uh, expectation setting by the care provider so they know what it's going to be at least. Um, I think a broad range that can fluctuate depending on things might be um, kind of add to maybe some confusion or
Well, well, to be clear, we will settle on a, on a twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five formula, um, and then establish the base fee for the first year in twenty-six. Uh, and then that will be part of the educational campaign. And it is that figure that will be adjusted annually.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Fossey, you had a question or comment?
You said, uh, there was a list of facilities?
It should have come to you electronically.
Okay. Um,
I have a paper copy here if you need to see it.
Oh, no, I was just, what is the approximate number?
It's, it's about fifteen licensed facilities in the city.
Um, is there any other cities uh, that have uh, done similar?
Yeah, this uh, ordinance is almost um, drafted verbatim from a program in the city of Tacoma.
Uh, did they have, uh, thank you. Did they have any um, like lead-up grace period time in theirs?
They, they did. We talked with them uh, quite a bit about this actually and uh, some of the, you know, the experiences that they had as they implemented in twenty twenty-one. Um, they also recommended a, a grace period so that the, the, the first step is for council to decide if this is a, a, a practice that you would like to occur here in the city. And if you decide that that is the case, then we will build in a grace period to, again, we're not trying to alienate uh, these businesses in the city. We just are trying to incentivize them to do the work they're required to do. So, so yes, they had a grace period and we're proposing the same.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, any comments from our online council members? Nope. All right. So a reminder, this is uh, Council Bill two five zero six dash three eight, our first reading. Uh, the final reading of this is expected uh, July ninth, twenty twenty-five. And with no further items on the agenda and no other discussion, this meeting adjourned.